Called emergency meeting for today, April the 8th, 2016, of the Hidalgo County Commissioners' Court. President Dar, Commissioner Cantú, Precinct 2, Flores, Precinct 3, and myself, we have a quorum. The only item that's involved is an issue involving our elections. The upcoming primary runoff elections which are to take place, what's the date?
May 28th.
May 24th?
Election Day, 16th, January 24th.
May 24th?
Yes, sir.
There appears to be some, either concern or confusion, or a little bit of vote on who is required to do what, how many polling locations are going to be in place for the primary runoff? And then, why we're here today is because we appear to be running afoul in contravention of a statute. Okay, here it is. "The Hidalgo County Elections Department has a federal statutory deadline, as per the Texas Election Code, Section 86.004, to mail out ballots to military and overseas voters." The deadline is tomorrow, April the 9th, 2016. And right now, because of the confusion, there's a concern as to whether or not we can comply with this particular deadline. And hopefully by the end of this morning, or today, we'll have clarified it and avoided any concerns, any confusion, and we will also make sure that we comply with the, with this requirement of 86.004. Why don't we begin and, I'd like to get a list of those individuals who have an interest in stepping up and discussing this issue. I know that, I know for sure I'm going to ask Yvonne to come in and express her concerns from the county's department, and Mr. Godinez, Rick, on behalf of the Hidalgo County Democratic Party. Yvonne, can you step forward, please?
Thank you, and good morning, Judge, good morning Commissioners. You have received a package from my department with emails and a charted timeline that you can look at after, just so that you know that what I'm about to say today has support. Why are we here today? Well, the Hidalgo County Elections Department works diligently to meet not just all our statutory deadlines, but all obligations that include ethical and otherwise. And we depend on other entities when we administer these elections to give us information on a timely manner. Now, those entities that do not understand the importance of these deadlines sometimes are late in giving us the information, and that's why we find ourselves here today. I have a statutory deadline, and it's a federal statutory deadline, to meet the voting needs of our military service personnel and all of our U.S. citizens that find themselves outside the United States, and that deadline is tomorrow. We also have a need of over 3,000 annual applications for our disabled and our 65 and over to receive their mail ballot as well, and those citizens that will find themselves outside the county as well. Now, what does this mean? That means that I need to obtain information on a timely manner. And putting aside all those statutory demands that we're all talking about, let's talk about our ethical obligations as well. I have been addressing the need for the parties to give us information, in particular today, for their polling locations. Why their polling locations? Because it requires, in order for us to correctly code an election and prepare all the processes that are required, the first step is the need to have those polling locations. Without this, this systemic and demanding process cannot begin. And just because the party does not, because they don't have a statutory deadline to give us these polling locations, we understand that, but there is an ethical, an ethical need to meet that deadline, because they have contracted us to run their election. And without this, we cannot correctly then process and administer their election in a timely manner. One step is dependent on another, is how we need to correctly process this election. Now, again, I reiterate that I have given you emails and communications that have transpired with the parties, mainly Mr. Godinez and with Kenneth Giffen, asking for these types of information so that we can continue. So finally, on March 30th, we had a meeting with Mr. Godinez, and he then informed me that they had selected 45 locations. Now, it's important for you all to note that Michael Sosa, my IT supervisor, because all this is dependent on his job that he has to do in coding, he had given me a recommendation of 50 poll locations. He had strategically studied the voter turnout, the list of registered voters, and the placement of these poll locations with historical data. And he had given me a recommended list of 40 election day poll sites for the runoff. But when we met with Mr. Godinez, he had that list in front of him, and he started to cross off and exchange poll locations.
Hold on, can you tell me what the date was, if they gave you the 45?
March 30th. March 30th. So, we were, of course, their obligation to select the polling locations, and we did talk about the fact that we had recommended 50, and they decided on 45. So I did tell Mr. Godinez at that moment that we were going to start the process of beginning the coding. On Wednesday, April 6th, at 8:04, the party was sent their four ballot styles to proof. We then, you know, had done all the way up to that point, but on that same day, at 1:02, I receive an email from Mr. Godinez, and I'm expecting to open it and tell us, "Go on. The proofs are good to go." But instead, his letter was, his email was a bit confusing, because he said they wanted to add two more locations, which have made 47, but then it also had an attachment of 48 locations, and then the last paragraph, and you all have a copy of that email, said that they wanted to open up all 75. So, as I called in, my IT supervisor said, "I'm confused. I don't know which way to go." And that afternoon, I met with Judge Garcia, and hence, here we are today. Now, keep this in mind. There were 75 locations opened up in the primary, because there were 49 races, there were 89 candidates, and six propositions. That transferred into 32 different ballot styles. Right now, the Democratic Party for the runoff has five races, 10 candidates, and four ballot styles. Three of these are countywide, and two are specific to a district. So you can understand why we recommended the 50, strategically placing these poll locations in order to serve the community of Hidalgo County well. And also, please know-
Yvonne, I don't want to miss my dates.
Yes, sir.
April 6th, the party came back and said they wanted not 45, but they wanted 47 or 48?
Well, in his email, he says, "We're going to add two more," which would have made it 47, but then he attached a list which had 48. And then the last paragraph asked for 75. So I just didn't know which way to go there. Now, it's important to note that throughout the state of Texas, runoffs normally transpire on a reduced number of polling locations. This is very customary, and it's always been done here in Hidalgo County, always. Even the Secretary of State's office reduces their early voting days from 12 to 5. There will be five early voting days. Now, keep in mind that as the party had told us that they would reduce to 45, I spoke to my supervisors, because normally we reduce early voting, and we decided not to. We decided to keep all the sites. In fact, we're coming to court probably next week to ask your permission to add STC, so that we now have the 26, the 25 original plus one more. So we decided that we would serve the community in this way, since early voting turnout is always so much higher. Now, another area of concern is our poll workers. In our contract, the Democratic Party stated that they wanted to secure and hire all poll location workers. Why? Maybe various reasons, but one of them is our policy that does not allow employees from the county to work at a poll location and be paid from the same payroll, which we pay them from that payroll. In them then securing these workers, they would be able to pay them out of a different payroll account, and there wouldn't be, you know, a conflict with the policy that this county has. So we said, "That's fine." So they went ahead and secured these, but let me give you some data. There were 75 locations which required 75 judges, they gave us 40. We needed 525 clerks, they secured 47. You can see how difficult it was. Now, I applaud the effort that the party has made this past week in asking people to come forward and come and volunteer, because now, this is how many, as of yesterday, we have an updated list. We need, for the 75, 75 judges again, they have secured 48. We need 450 clerks. Why less? Because there will be less machines, which then require less workers.
How many clerks?
We need 40, 150 if they want all 75 locations. And they have listed 193. I cannot even say secured, because as my operations supervisor has started to call about training and about the location of where they are placed, she's already having them drop out.
Excuse me, you said they need 150 or?
No, 450.
450, okay.
And they have listed, not confirmed, 193. That's as of yesterday. As of yesterday. Now, we also spoke to Mr. Godinez about training. We have always trained. In fact, for the, for the primary, we trained the Saturday and the Sunday before Election Day, because we were waiting to fill these locations at the very last minute. And so we waited. We usually do not train or work the last weekend, because we are coming out of an early voting, and my staff is exhausted. So we did it though, because it's important to have these workers trained, especially because some of the listings that they gave us, these persons had never worked, and they were placing them as judges. We have never done this, because it is such a responsibility. So, it is very important to note, we have a runoff of five races. This has always been done to reduce the locations. So, where are we now? You know, if we are to reduce the polling locations, we will serve the community well. We are keeping all our early voting sites, we don't see an issue. And, you know, I just got a notice right before this meeting started, that the Democrats had given us the ballot order, and one of the races is incorrect. This is why we cannot hurry up at the very last minute and code an election. Now, my supervisor has to go back and redo that particular race, because out of five races, one was out of incorrectly in the order. These things happen. It's happened before, and so giving us time to prepare what it is we need to do is critical. If we are then asked to change what, by good faith, we were told on that March 30th meeting, that they had secured 45. The fact that we have more workers, great. We will train more workers, we need workers all the time, but we all need to meet our ethical obligations of deadlines. We all need to take a part in what we do as the Elections Department to prepare for elections, because it takes all of us in order that this be done correctly.
Well, besides ethical obligation, it's also a legal responsibility. There was a contract signed.
Yes, sir.
All right, and let me run that contract by you, I want to make sure that I understand it. Under the contract, which was signed in February the 2nd of this year, the party is running the election day voting.
That's correct.
All right, the county, through your department, is involved in running the early voting?
Yes, sir, and we're also contracted to serve them, assist them, administer, provide supplies, training, all that. But it is their obligation to secure workers by contract and to secure poll locations.
All right, and that's where the confusion lies, and our goal is to provide a fair election to the voters and residents of this county.
That's correct.
There's nothing fairer than if we can open up the same 75 that were in place in the primary election. But I'm concerned that while we may want to do that, we're not going to have the people necessary to operate the booth, the polling locations on that particular day.
That's correct.
But now, if the election is not going to be held until May the 24th, I mean, that sounds like a long time.
It does, doesn't it? Except for the federal statute that says that a ballot has to be out tomorrow for our military. And what is difficult to understand, Judge, is that in order for us to print that ballot, the election has to be coded. We cannot just sit there and type up a ballot and send it out. It has to be coded, and then from there, we're not done. Operations then has to input all the information into that software, and then begin to print, begin to sort. There are four different envelopes, there are labels to be printed and put on. We have, we have a line of all workers in my department to help operations prepare this. It's not just done in a day or two. It takes time in order that our military personnel and our overseas voters receive the correct ballot. This isn't something that happens quickly, it's something that happens-
If we were to direct you today to open up the 75 locations, can you comply with-
No, sir. No, sir. The time has run out. We will not be able to comply. I would have to then report to the state on Monday, and this would be our very first time to tell them.
How many can we increase? None?
How many can we?
Go up.
As far as locations, because of the good faith effort that we were told that it was 45, that's where we're at.
That's it.
In order to code again, everything we have done, everything has to be tossed in the trash can, and we have to start again. In a primary election, at minimum, we give Mr. Sosa two weeks. It is such a difficult process. Can you imagine? 32 different ballot styles. That means that in the primary, there were 32 different ways a voter could vote. There are over 325,000 registered voters that he has to support, even though there are only five races. Every voter that goes out to vote, when they hit print, when they hit their precinct, that ballot needs to be coded for them. It's not an easy process, and it's one that is difficult to understand unless you're there, and he's there. And I've asked him to be here today, in case, you know, he needed to answer any questions, because after all, he's the one that works straight through.
Yvonne, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I know that when it's a county election, we pay $12 an hour-
Yes, sir.
-for the judges.
Yes, sir.
When it's a state election, federal election, it's only $8. Can the county subsidize or give a donation for that, Steve?
We could certainly work with-
But, no, no, not directly to the, but what about the county donating it to the, donating some money to the Democratic Party or the Republican Party?
Commissioner, I need you to check the election code.
Because it's very hard to find judges at $8 an hour.
Yes, sir. It is, it is a challenge, and my hat's off to them for what a great job they have done in securing more workers, because you heard the numbers. Now they're up to a list of 190-something, when for the primary, they gave us 40-something, because they couldn't find them. So they have done a great, great service and a great effort. But, like anything else, there should be deadlines of obligation, and their deadline has passed as far as sending out our ballot to the military and to our overseas voters. We will not be able to meet that obligation.
All right, but let, why don't we hear from Mr. Godinez at this time?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I'm Rick Godinez, Hidalgo County Democratic Chairman. I want to introduce Kenneth Giffen, who is our secretary and also the primary administrator. The law allows us to appoint a primary administrator who's the point person in charge of most of the issues related to elections. I want to start off by thanking Elections Department and her staff. It's been a tough process, but I believe we have worked well together despite some of the comments of Ms. Ramon. But I do want to correct a few things that were said. On, the election was March 1st, I believe we had our first meeting on the 3rd, right after the election. And we anticipated that the Elections Department would come back and want to consolidate polls. That has been an issue, as long as I can remember, with the party. Any Democrat, all Democrats, believe that if you're going to have a fair election, it means to have as many polls and many opportunities for people to vote. The problem is, those that have passion with that, and the judge who hit the nail on the head, sometimes don't take into account the logistical requirements, cost, drop in volunteerism, and more importantly, drop in actual voters that may come out. So we have this kind of internal conflict. There was, at that discussion, when we brought it up, there were some very passionate speeches by many of our members, and ultimately, it was decided, and a motion was brought, that they wanted 75 polls. I knew the moment that, and that was a unanimous vote, by the way, from the CEC.
When did that occur?
March 3rd, I think was it, whatever the first meeting was.
Two days after.
It was Wednesday, March 9th.
Right, March 9th, the next following week, pardon me. So, so that was my direction as Chair of the party. And I knew the response would be, "Okay, well, where's the manpower?" Because we were unable to provide the manpower. And let me, I have Kenneth here to help me with facts and figures as the primary administrator, but to give you an idea of what we started this process. October, November of last year, we had started the process of trying to secure election judges and clerks, because it's always been a perennial problem. Part of it, Commissioner, is correct, it's the cost requirement. We only get an $8 reimbursement from the state. The party itself has limited funds. I think we did a calculation that for 75 polls, if we were to bump that just by $1, I think it was around-
$4,500.
About $4,500, which we just do not, as a party, have the resources to do. That's just a $1 bump. So, that clearly is, in terms of the number of staff that you have. So, we started this process back in October, November. It has been the subject of every single monthly meeting, which we've had a quorum at. It's been the subject of emails that have been sent out two or three times to my CEC first, and then to the general email list that we have as a party, which is in the thousands. And at the end of that process, we still only had 40 election judges and 45 clerks at the time Elections was telling us, telling us, you know, "Hey, we need to have this information, and we need to code." And we understand and empathize with the time that they need for that. Where I want to correct Ms. Ramon is, I always told her, "I have no authority other than to approve 75 polls." I said, "I understand you're going to come back and say, 'Where are these judges?'" I cannot force my CEC to do these things. This is what we've had, it was an effort that, you know, we even put resources, in fact, the gentleman who was here was a contract labor, the young man, called all the judges that he could within a period of time, exceeded the budget, not by his fault, just from the time it took, that I, as a chairman, had to make a decision. At the same time, we were receiving requests from the Elections Department with me from them. So we met with them on the 30th, and I made it very clear. I said, "Look, I'm here to tell you that the only authority I have is to authorize 75 polling locations. If we're not going to have 75, and I understand, I'm coming here hat in hand, because I don't have 75 judges for you, I had 40 judges and 45 clerks, then I want to sit down with you and figure out how many we can have." And they said, "Well, I think we can find five more." And we, we had a collaborative discussion, we talked about which polls to keep open and closed, and ultimately, that was the discussion. And so, I left there, I thought, with the understanding that they knew that, "Look, again, I only have authority to perhaps have 75. But if you are going to make a decision that you can't have that, and you have, can only have the 40 or 45, the judges that we had, then we've gone through that process to look at it." So, after that, you know, again, we made one last push, it was picked up by the media. There have been some very positive things, as pointed out by Ms. Ramon from that. We had a tremendous outpouring from the community. We had many of our chairs that had came and provided additional people. Why they didn't do that beginning in October, November, I don't understand, but we are where we are. And so, as of now, my understanding is, we have a total of 260 bodies, not the 193, but 260 bodies, that can either serve as election judge or election clerks. Now, there is some concern by both the primary administrator, and I'll let her address that in a minute, and I think as well as the Elections Department, that it's not just a warm body in a chair. These need to be properly trained individuals that can do the job. And so many of those numbers were people who had never been involved in the process. And so there was a concern of both, again, the primary administrator and Elections, that, "Well, maybe we should train them as clerks, and then move them up to Elections for other, move them up to election judge for other elections." So, I was also asked to be at the meeting that you all had on Thursday to approve those 45. I sent an email, I hope it's in the list that she gave you, that clearly said, "Look, I can't be there, because I don't have authority to authorize anything from others 75." So, I have this passionate CEC that does a fantastic job for our community, that clearly wants to have more polls, yet not the volunteerism that's required from the Elections Department. That's the internal conflict. Perhaps some of it is the pay aspect, as Commissioner Flores mentioned. So, so that's where we are. And we stand prepared to do whatever it is, but I think even there's some concerns of the list that we have now, whether we'll be able to man them with 75 qualified and ready-to-go judges by the election day. I'll let Kenneth address that in a minute and why she feels that way. And I know there are members of my CEC that are upset with that, but from my mind, there has to be a certain amount of discretion in the primary administrator that we have chosen and the Elections Department, because they're on the front lines, and they're making decisions, they deal with the problems, the immediate of problems. There has to be some discretion from them on who they believe is qualified and not qualified to be a judge. So, I'm not sure what the solution is. I would like to make a suggestion, and one thing I'd like to hear from Elections Department is, we haven't heard how many actual mail overseas ballots they have to send. I don't think the law, and I'll defer to your legal counsel, but I don't think the law does not allow mail ballot, paper ballots for those if it's a small, if it's a small number. And that would hopefully, if we can get as many judges as we can, that both the primary administrator and the Elections has to man, you know, maybe that's 50, maybe it's 55. And I'm going to pass the podium over, so she can explain, I think, in her mind, on what we have now, and the resources we've obtained now, on what's realistic in terms of polling locations. Kenneth?
Thank you. Thank you, Judge, thank you Commissioners, thank you for being here, always a pleasure. I wish it were more pleasant circumstances. At the moment, we have about 260 people that could serve as either judges or clerks. Not all of them have served before, so probably about, I think, 60 to 70 will need training. That is a four-hour train. The Elections Department training is excellent. I highly recommend it for anybody. However, it is four hours out of your day, and we cannot pay for that. Also, the judges have to drive to Edinburgh on the Monday before the election to pick up their judges kit. We cannot pay for that. The really good judges take some time, an hour or two on Monday night before the election to set up in their location. We cannot pay for that. So they're limited to Election Day, getting paid that $8 an hour. So I think in a lot of cases, the increase in money would help a lot. We did propose that, it kind of went nowhere, and we have not been able to get people to donate for it. With 260 people, a lot of those people will, would be first-time judges, they have not worked as clerks. My preference is that someone works as a clerk at least once before going in and serving as judge. I know that people can do it successfully the first time out. It's just a lot of extra stress on everybody, so it's better if you've at least seen it. To go into that four-hour training, not having any experience with any of this, not knowing the vocabulary, not knowing anything about it, is like going into anything else for your first time, and you've never heard of any of this, and you've got four hours of it, just going, "Whew," you know? And not too many of us would pick up on everything, we'd pick up the high points, but not everything. So, bottom line, 45 polls, no problem. We made the list for 48, adding three more in, because we had, felt we had the personnel. I don't think that's a problem. 50, I think we could do. We probably could stretch it to 60. At 75, we're probably looking at undermanning the polls. I think you're looking at a lot of polls with two or three people there, instead of four or five, or maybe six at a couple of the bigger ones. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
This is not the first election that you, as have been the, what is your position?
I'm the Democratic Primary Administrator, Judge, and I did it last time. As you know, we had some interesting situations there with an additional runoff, and-
How many locations did we have in the runoff?
We cut down to 50 last time. I thought it was 50. When I looked on the sheet from 2014, it says 50.
I think it was 59, but remember, there were, that runoff got kind of chopped up, because there were lawsuits. The first round, I think, there was 59. I don't know about the second one, that was the JP race in- in-. I don't know about the second one that was the JP race in, in PC2.
I think there were fewer then.
See, the way, out of fairness to Ms. Ramon, we do have a contract.
Yes.
She has a right to rely on that contract.
Yes.
And under that contract, you obligated the party, the members of the Executive Committee of the party, all, I'm sure we're aware...
Yes.
...that the contract was going to be signed, and that they, they were going to be obligating themselves to provide the personnel.
Yes.
The judges and the, the clerks.
Yes.
And just not, not fair to, at this late date, be, be facing this kind of a situation. Not fair to anybody.
Correct. We emailed the contract out to the CEC members.
Because I, I don't really like the idea of, of cutting down on locations, because you never, you never know what race you're going to be affected.
True.
And it's not fair to the candidates who have worked as hard as I'm sure they had to have worked and make, make it into the runoff. And then they wa, wake up and start getting phone calls that, you know, they're going to close a location in Mercedes, and that's where you're strongest, and, or, you know, that kind of thing. And they, it's, it's never, it never does said well.
Correct.
So, the ideal thing is to figure out how in the world we can work it out to where we can have all 75 locations open, the same ones, same locations, same place, as were open on Election Day in the primary.
Certainly the ideal. Would love it.
I don't think we disagree with you at all, Judge. This is something that we've been telling our, our membership, our CEC, for months. And so, and, and to their credit, they've done a lot of good on helping us. It just, they started very late for some reason. We had, like I said, at the time, that I was getting pressure to meet with the Elections Department, we had 40 and 45. And that's what we based polls on at the time.
I think part of the reason, and I know, because, as you know, I was Democratic Party Chair for a while in the 90s, is that the, the members of the Executive Committee are concerned about letting go of whatever influence or may come with that position and that they can exert on that, on that Election Day. They're not, they're concerned about letting it go and be placed in the hands of the Elections Administrator. But I think, you know, out of fairness to the voters and the residents and the, and the, uh, the contestants in the election, the candidates, you know, we're going to have to figure out a way where we can avoid this kind of a situation and just place it in the hands early in the Elections Administrator. That's her job. That's our, that's our role, to provide a fair election. Let her worry about selecting the election judges and the elec, and the election clerks. Because otherwise, there's going to be a conflict. I mean, there's too many, there's too many different individuals involved and...
A lot of cooks in the kitchen.
So, how do we, how do we get, get to 70? I guess the first thing we got to do is figure out, Yvonne, is there a way that that law can be, you know, delayed a little bit?
No, sir.
How, how many overseas ballots are we talking about?
300 and 300.
Yeah. Yvonne, Yvonne, can you come over here?
We have got 300 FPCAs, which include the military service and the overseas citizens, and we've got a little over 3,000. Keeping in mind that those 3,000 are for the, the, the community of Hidalgo County, and, and those, it will be absent, but they still have to be printed and coded from the same statutory deadline. They're all, that me, that's everything. So, although May 24th seems far away, the 45 federal deadline changed everything, Judge.
What can we do to get an extension? Can we call the Secretary of State?
No, sir, there is no extension.
See what kind of suggestions they may have?
No, sir, there is no extension. I would have to communicate with them on Monday, and of course, I've already communicated with them.
But can we do it this morning? While we're all here and take a break and call and talk to somebody in their legal? Maybe you can buy an additional few a week or...
There, there is no extension on this. We would just be late, and like any other, uh, break and, and you not meeting your statutory deadlines, it, it just depends on, on the federal government and, and what they've done. We've never been in this position, Judge. We've always met our deadlines. And so, I don't know what that would be, but there, there is no such allowance of extensions in the election code for this.
But, but to clarify...
And again, I've been reminded that this is not our election, it is your election.
Yes.
So, technically, the people that would be in violation would be you and your committee.
That's correct.
And Judge, I would just like to, to clarify a point that Mr. Godinez made, is that he says to his, his Executive Committee, as to what he said today, I know the Elections Department is going to want to consolidate. No, sir, we don't. And, and before he left on, on March 30th, I said, remember, if you had said to us, we want 75, and you had declared 75, all you need to do is be responsible to fill the 75. We will code 75. But that was not, that was not what was told to us. And, and I, I don't believe I misunderstood. We, we, he had our 50, and he himself crossed out, had crossed out and exchanged. So, there is no way that I thought, oh, you know what, we'll code 45, but we'll wait around till right, the day before our deadline to then code 75.
I'm not saying that, Judge. And when I can show you the emails, they recommended 50.
We did.
They did. And so, they wanted to consolidate. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I mean, they have consolidated polls since time immemorial on elections. That's just part of the process. So, this is not an attack on Yvonne or her department. This is just stating the facts that, look, that's what we, that where we are. And she's absolutely right. It's our responsibility to get the workers. It's our responsibility to do that. I could not get more than 85 by the time they were demanding I meet with them. That's the bottom line.
I think I'd like to go to the day of the election, when we have 75 polling locations open. Practically speaking, what are we looking at, or what's our, I mean, we, you know, what's our best guess of what's going to be happening that day? Are we going to have competent people, or, you know, what's going to happen when we start having questions in two, two different sides of the, of the county? How's that going to be handled?
It's...
From your experience?
I think right now, we, we need 450, and we got 260.
Well, but the election judge, I think, is the, is the biggest key, because that's the person that, that everybody's going to defer to. And what do we do in this situation? And so, I, I'm concentrating more on the, on the 75.
If we have a lot of new election judges, and we always have some that are, that have not been in it before, we did this last time in the primary. What we saw in the primary was a lot of calls into the Elections Office, which always happens. That's why they have people there to answer the phones. Where we run into trouble is we don't have enough clerks at the polls. We have election judges calling in repeatedly, I need more clerks, I need more clerks. We have no more clerks to offer them. I know that happened in the primary. I heard it. You've got to allow, I think, some room for things such as, in the primary, 8 o'clock the night before the primary election, Melissa called me and said, I can't get a hold of one of your judges. She hasn't responded at all. Couple of those clerks are your students. And I said, let's see if any of the students are 18, we'll put them in as clerk. And I had a couple of others that were late getting their applications in, so we put them in as election clerks, and that's what we ran with. I was over there at 5:30 in the morning to help them set up. Elections personnel came in, and it was one of my government students, who's 18 and a registered voter, who ran that poll, with a lot of help, but he did it. 5:30 that morning, we get a call from the Judge of Pepe Salinas. None of her clerks are showing up. They've all backed out. The people in Elections, who were supposed to be answering the phones at the Elections Office, went to Pepe Salinas to act as clerks. So, then we didn't have the people in the Elections Office to answer the phone calls.
Why is that? Because of the pay?
Um...
Or just the people?
I think it's a combination of things, Commissioner. I think the pay is part of it. I would hope that people would want to do it out of civic pride and dedication to the system, just in some point, because that's really what drives it more than the $8 an hour. It's a lot to ask of people. And when we say, we can't pay you for training, we can't pay you for setup, we can't pay you for driving into Edinburgh and picking up your supplies, on top of the other, I think you're making a lot of demands, especially on people who say, I have to work for a living.
Do you know of any other county in the state that subsidizes that $4 or whatever? I mean, more than what the state pays?
I believe Nueces does.
And why is Steve saying, why are you saying, Steve, that the county can't do it?
No, I'm saying, I need a little bit of election code to answer that question.
Because if you offer them a little bit more money, you're going to get more and more, more people applying, or, you know, be there.
Some, yes.
That would make it do.
It'll help.
So, I know it's going to cost...
The, the article in the Monitor helped tremendously. I've been inundated with phone calls. They're now down to about four or five a day instead of 10 or 20 a day, but that helped tremendously. We picked up a lot of people. We picked up people at the county convention, so everything helps some.
And I think part of it was, we did offer to subsidize a little bit, again, which was in our budget. I think we estimated that for the $1 increase in a runoff with less polls, it was about $2,500, and we could have afforded that, or I would have found sponsors for it.
I've got a question. Steve just told me that, is that a county election that you're talking about, or the state election? Nueces County?
A primary, a primary, Ms. Ramon.
That may be the general. I'll, I'll be glad to check on that and find out for you, sir.
We'll let the judge know on that.
Yes, sir.
Because we're willing to help. I pitch in, I mean, I don't mind, I mean, it's something we, we have to do.
Why don't we do this?
Let me just clarify that point, Judge. May I? Because the county pays the general Election Day and early voting. So, they add, during the November, will get 12, judges will get 12, and clerks will get 10-10. Because this county is responsible to pay both early voting and Election Day. The responsibility of the parties is only Election Day primary.
Why don't we make some time and have Steve?
One, one other issue, Steve. Could, could this election be contested if we don't get the ballots out on time?
That could be a, could be a problem for the Democratic Party if the ballots don't get out on time.
I, I know you represent the county, but could it be possible to send just the, it seems to me that the, the deadline that, that is pushing this right now is the federal deadline to send out the, the military ballots. The, the deadline, I understand state law, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a deadline of when you, the first, when you can first send out mail ballots. I'm talking about the regular mail ballots for Hidalgo County. And I, I, I don't know what that, I don't recall what the deadline was, but it seems to me that's what's really pushing this, and we're talking about 300. Could we not do that by paper? Only those 300? That would give you time to recode for whatever this body decides is the appropriate number of election polls.
We have checked with a prior administrator, and we've been advised that the county has gotten involved in subsidizing it.
For both parties?
We have both parties in the past. So, I'm, I'm sure that legally we can do it. But in any event, we're still going to rely on Steve to look into it. Why don't we take about, you know, 15, 30-minute break? Steve can, can look into that, and at the same time, we can make a phone call to the Secretary of State and find out if we can get an extension, or if they don't want to call it an extension, how late can we be in, in sending those ballots out overseas? And then we can come back and convene to see where we go from there.
And Judge, if I can, shall I stress, so everyone understands this, this is not a county election.
It is.
This is a Democratic Party election.
That's correct.
But we owe an obligation to the residents of this county to make sure that we do it, that it gets done, and it gets done fairly.
And there's a contractual relationship between the parties, too.
Right.
Ms. Ramon, as long as you've been here, we've never subsidized the county for any...
No, sir. No, sir, we, we've never subsidized.
And even, even though this is a Democratic Party primary, for the most part, remember that we do share with the Republicans.
Yeah.
So, their runoff is also...
We need to be fair.
Right. And they helped. They kicked in the last time when we paid the primary workers, so we, we share costs. We know that. So, they are a part of this, even though we're, we may be the driving force, and of course, we're trying to get all Democrats, if we can, to man the polls. It's still there.
Judge, I was the Republican primary coordinator, and we had trouble getting enough judges. And yesterday, the county chair and I discussed it with Yvonne, and we're going to go with 45, because we cannot get any more workers than that. And also, as an election judge, and having to train clerks and future judges, let me get something.
But, but there's no issue with the Republican Party. Am I correct?
It's no issue with, it's no issue with the Republican Party.
All right.
But training is. This is the book that I train my clerks with. You can't learn that in four hours of training. It takes time. It takes working on more than one election. And I was getting phone calls in the primary about, what do we do? We can't get a hold of the Elections Department, and I'm trying to run a polling location.
Okay. Well, let's go, let's get back to the issue at hand, and let's, let's make those phone calls.
There, there is no issue with the Republican Party, except that they had agreed to join poll locations. They had agreed. They did this during the primary, and now with the 45, before, we were at least able to share the check-in, and now they're going to be, if, if, if the decision is made to move forward from 45, then now there will have to be more judges and clerks hired, because there will be completely two separate elections running. So, there are more repercussions because of the decisions that were originally made, and now at this late date to change. And, and I know my IT supervisor is here when, when Mr. Godinez says, you know, 300 ballots. Again, I, I've got my, my staff here, because they're the ones that have to do this together. It's not something that is done overnight and not something that is done quickly. We have to print those ballots. We cannot print those 300 ballots without the election being coded.
All right. Do you have the ability to call somebody at the Secretary of State?
I do. I will call right now.
Why don't we take a 30-minute recess, and you make the phone calls and include Steve on him, so that he can be aware as to, you know, what the discussions are all about, and see if we can get an extension or a delay in setting out the ballot?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's... Any questions?
Judge Garcia, Commissioners, I, my name is Rosalie Weisfeld. I had signed up also to speak, and I just want...
I know, but we got to make those phone calls.
That's why I wanted to know if we will, if everyone else who signed up to have the opportunity to speak will have that opportunity.
Will you come back?
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Whenever you speak, I would like for Yvonne to hear what you say and, and say things. Be fair.
I, I appreciate that, and thank you for that clarification.
All right, it is 10:54. We're going to take a 30-minute recess, make those phone calls. All right, at this time, we're going to be convening, reopening our meeting after a recess. And let me make some, some, an announcement. During the recess, we visited with the Secretary of State, representative, a lawyer named Tim, and who advised us that there is no authority for a formal extension of the deadline. But he said we could be, we could be late. And how late is late? And he said, well, a reasonable period of time. And I, presenting him, I said, well, what if we're up to 10 days late? If you're late, you're late, type of response. So, that to me means that we have at least a 10-day window in which to complete whatever encoding needs to be done, so that the ballots can be mailed overseas properly. We then, I, I wanted to address the issue of, of the workers, and the, one of the main reasons we believe that you've been unable to attract workers is because of what you're paying them, which the state authorizes $8 an hour. We called the Secretary of State, Mr. Carlos Cascos, who put us in contact with his lawyer, the chief lawyer named, a gentleman named Keith Ingram. And Mr. Ingram says that there is no authority for, the, first of all, there's no money from the state to pay in it over $8. But he said, we asked him, can we, as a county, supplement? And he says, there is no authority for you to do it, but there's frankly no authority for you not to do it, and some counties are, have done it. So, that to me means we can do it. So, you know, we, we will be, hopefully, depending on the wishes of the court... So, you know, we, we will be, hopefully, depending on the wishes of the court, supplementing that, that pay scale that you presently have, which as I understand it, is $8 an hour? Is that for both clerks and judges? Are, are they different?
That's the same amount.
It's the same for both, all electionists.
Okay. And...
What about early vote?
That's the, that's the county.
Yeah, that's our deal.
All right.
And they pay, I think, $12.
$12.
Yeah, well, we want to pay them the same, the same amount, the $12.
And Judge, you, you are letting me, just for the record, I'm going to check on that, see if we can find authority.
Okay. So, I don't know, could we take that kind of action at this meeting?
Not ahead of this agenda.
Well, then, make sure you put it on the agenda for the, for next meeting, yes, so that we can go ahead and increase, provide a supplemental pay of an additional $4 an hour to the election workers and the election judges for the primary runoff election.
Both parties?
You have to do it for both.
Both parties. You have to do it for both parties. But then again, can we get a number? I mean, how many, how many hours are we talking about?
Of workers?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Well, I think we've identified approximately 260 so far. But if, correct me if I'm wrong, the election judges get paid 12 and clerks 10?
Ten.
Yeah. 10-10. So that would be the same. So I, I don't know, we haven't looked at how many judges or not because we're waiting to get this done. And let, let me kind of also inform the Court that while you're on break, actually, a lot of what you're saying is good news because we were anticipating the answer was going to be no, we're kind of stuck. And so, we had also noticed a CEC meeting for today. One of the CEC members made a motion and a second. There was field discussion. It is very, very much contested and a hot-button issue, but ultimately passed it. If we were forced to it, we would give the authority for the 45.
Well, we're not going to force anybody. This is your election.
No, I, I understand. That was perhaps the wrong word. If we had no other choice because of limits, it would be 45. This may change some of that in terms of, I've asked Kenna, you know, time and again, "Look, what are you comfortable with as the Administrator?" And she's telling me 55, 60 is a stretch. So...
Well, we don't want to tell you what number to come up with.
I understand.
Because it's important that you have a fair election. And that's something that you have to do.
And there's a concern, there's a concern from some of them that, you know, I would have liked to have been told much earlier, but there's a concern, there's a majority, I think, that passed the 45. If I could be given a couple minutes to meet with them again, just to make it that number...
I'd like to get it done today because the, our staff needs to start doing whatever they need to do.
I understand. It should take longer than a couple minutes, Your Honor.
Also, add training and delivery. Because remember, the training also does not get paid, and then the judge has an additional $25 to pick up and deliver. So that's also something that our county pays judges and clerks, and you all don't.
For the training.
No, but actually, for the deliveries, it's $15 that the state reimburses the parties. So we can, the 10 that will be required.
Well, there, there's a good portion of our committee here that feels strong enough about it. I'm sure they'll help us raise the money or help do the deliveries.
And training.
And, well, the training is, you guys do.
Can you come in and state it into the record so we can have it recorded?
Say your name.
Judge, Commissioners, I'm Melissa Alveda, as the Elections Operations Manager. For the delivery fee for the parties, it's $15, when the county pays $25. And for judges and clerks, it's, for judges, $12, and for the clerks, it's 10-10. So it would be a total of $6, being $4 for the clerks, for the parties for Election Day, and $6 for the, for the judge, and $10 for the, for the delivery fee. And then for the training, we pay $7 across the board.
Well, we want to pay the same thing for Election Day and the primary runoff. Provide Mr. Yara with those, those figures of when we, we make the motion, it'll be the same thing.
Got it. Will do. Thank you.
Rick, you, you had a preliminary number. You said about, for every dollar, it was $4,500?
I think for every dollar, it was, and this was for the runoff, again, based on lower amounts. For 40...
If we had 75 polls, $1 an hour increase would be $4,500 approximately.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
For each $1.
So if we just based around $3, so we're talking about 13,500.
Yeah, something around there.
Just to give us, give about an idea. Of course, there's going to be those other, the deliverables and the training and so forth. So 15, 17,000.
Okay. All right, so you need, you need to, to meet again, is that what you're saying?
I think we have the direction from you. I mean, I, I mean, unless you guys need to approve it, we would break and I would meet with them and we'd come back and tell you what the decision is of the CEC.
But like the judge said, we need to get...
Yeah. We need for you guys to give us a figure that, that the committee, your committee, is not going to come back again next week and say, "No, we want to change our..."
I, I understand, Judge. I have 18, I think, I don't know how many people we have here from our CEC. There's obviously a lot of passion that's happening on, on those that want the full 75. And so I just, I have a primary administrator and an Elections Department tell me that's going to be very, very, very difficult.
Four years ago, on a presidential race, we had 75, didn't we, in the runoff?
79.
79?
59.
59.
No, 59, 59, 2012, 2013, there were 59 in runoff. Wow.
And right now, we're down to 47?
45.
45.
But, but remember, sir, there were more races on that, on the ballots. So it's all determined on the number of races on the ballots and, and...
She's correct. In the 2012 race, they, they went down, I think, to 59 in the runoff.
So how much time do you think you need to reconvene your meeting and, and act?
No, no more than five minutes.
Like you? Go for it.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we're going to be reconvening our meeting after that second recess. All right, Mr. Godinez?
Thank you, and thank you for your patience, Commission and County Judge. We have reconvened. We had noticed, just, just for the record, I did provide notice to all CEC members as requested by the County Judge to be here for the County Commission's meeting. And I decided at the same time to post a CEC meeting notice at the same time that where polling locations would be discussed, just in the event we needed to take action. And I'm glad we've done that because now the action is, the vote has been 55 polling locations with the actual locations to be cited by Kenna. That list will be provided today, no later than 3:00?
Okay.
Than 3:00 to County Elections Department. That has been our vote.
Would you, are you going to be letting the candidates themselves know of your position?
That's correct.
Because we want to make sure that the public and the candidates know that this is your election. We're accommodating your request, and you, you have now determined that 55 polling locations will be adequate to serve the needs of, of your party.
Based on the resources we have. That's correct, sir.
All right.
What about the, the $4 increase? That can be done later?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're not going to be paid until Election Day, Judge, so, or Commissioner.
If you need any figures, Kenna, make sure you visit with Ms. Ramon.
We will.
We want to make sure that we're fair about the way that we're, about the way that you're going to be doing this. It's not our responsibility legally, but we want to make sure that we make our resources available so that you can fairly and adequately determine which locations to shut down.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other? Yes, ma'am.
County Judge, Commissioners, Attorney Steve Crane, County Attorney, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Rosalie Weisfeld. I am a member of the Hidalgo County Democratic Party Executive Committee. I'm a precinct chair for Precinct 168.